I want to call our U-46 meeting to order at 6:30. And I want to move us into executive session for matters of personnel discussion with the superintendent and the prudential committee. So we went into, called the meeting to order at 6:30 Gary, and we'll go into executive session at 6:31, okay?
Mr. Travers will join us for part of the conversation.
Okay.
I'll let you know, okay?
Yeah, I'll be.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Jack, we're down 4-1 at the half in the process.
No way. But what? I can't believe that.
They won't start until probably 8 o'clock. The first game didn't start until 5:40.
Oh, because they're at Centennial.
Yeah. They're dependent on the first game getting done.
4-1.
Come hock.
Don't attack it too good.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you for coming this evening. We have visitors to be heard this evening, and we have a very full agenda of what's going on. So as I had mentioned to this board earlier, our agenda may be dynamic tonight, being aware of we have visitors to discuss this evening. But what I'd like to do before we start our session, let's start on my left, Mr. Redd, we'll go around our table and introduce ourselves.
Rob Redd, Essex High School principal.
Ryan McLaren, board member from Essex Town.
Good evening, Mike Dewis, superintendent.
Jack Balindorff, U-46 chairman.
Aaron Knox, board member from Essex Junction.
Paul DiCario, board member.
Mary Jacob, board member of Essex Town.
Bob Travers on that present.
Okay, thank you. We have visitors and staff to be heard, although I think our visitors that are here tonight are for a specific issue, not just to be here as observers. Is that fair for me to say? So that being the case, what I'd like to do is rearrange our agenda a little bit and put the Act 129 school choice and request right to the forefront, and we'll take care of that issue right now and continue on with our agenda. Is that okay with you, Dr. Dewis? Or do you have a preference for?
The board heard from a parent last month.
Okay.
Mrs. McDowell.
Yep.
And she indicated her intention to be here tonight.
Okay.
And we informed her what time that would be coming up this evening.
Gotcha.
So there's that dynamic in play.
Okay. So what's your recommended path forward then?
I would encourage we hear from citizens to be heard and go from there.
All right. So now's the time for our citizens to be heard. And open the floor if you want to introduce yourselves and state where you're from, and we're all ears.
My name is Amy Bradford, and this is my son Isaac Bradford Feldman. Isaac is an incoming freshman, and I live in Essex. And I've been in touch with Rob Redd and Mike Dewis over the last number of months. I think we were the first family to put Isaac in for school choice, and I think he was fortunate enough to at least be selected to go as far as to apply. He went through all of the application process at South Burlington where he felt he was a very, very good fit. And along this entire process, you know, I've received a lot of advice. I've spoken to my representative, my state representative, and I think I've heard a lot of sides, and I have to tell you that I appreciate that it's a complicated issue. And I also appreciate that you probably have a lot of other parents with compelling reasons to come to you and ask how we're going to handle what we're going to do with the problems on our plate. So I'm here as a mom for Isaac, and I want to also tell you that I am a teacher, and I've subbed here. I'm a highly qualified Vermont licensed teacher. I understand the dynamics that you're up against. I've also served on school board when inclusion was becoming a model in the state of McNamara. I have five children. Isaac's the last of five. My kids have been to Ivy League colleges. Some of them have been through special ed their entire high school time. I have an athlete, you know, I understand the dynamics. And I have two master's degrees, and I'm here to let you know that I don't do this very often, but this really means a lot to me for Isaac to be where he needs to be. So Isaac is a brilliant child, and he also comes with two diagnoses, Asperger's and Tourette Syndrome. And that pretty much means that Isaac has some very, very pointed interests that he wants to study, and to force him to do other things is sometimes swimming upstream. So as a mom, the things that I kind of choose my battles, the things that I expect from Isaac is that he's respectful, he obeys the law, that he treats people decently, and gets with the program as much as possible. But on the other hand, when it comes to his learning and his style and his interests, he's here to speak for himself about those things, and I'll give him a minute before I go. Before that, I want to let you know what Isaac's background is. Isaac went to K-12 in Essex, and during that time, I was homeschooling his older sister. So he was pretty much pulled out of Essex while we traveled around the world, and each time that I pulled him out and kind of homeschooled him, I noticed that he was very much behind. So Isaac tended to be delayed but functioned okay in public school because I kept bringing him back to speed. During K-12, I offered him a reading, writing, and math program in the summer to keep him on grade level. Grades four and three, three and four, Isaac was homeschooled fully. Grades five, six, seven, and eight, I was very relieved that our town started the Edge Academy, which is a project-based, self-directed learning environment, and Isaac has flourished. So in that environment, in public school, Isaac has not been on an IEP. Isaac's been on a 504. And so it's my goal for him to not be on an IEP. And I'm concerned about him coming into a typical high school environment, and having sat in your shoes and a number of different shoes, understand that IEPs become a financial issue as well as always trying to serve the child first. So I know I'm complicating the school choice issue, but Isaac right now does not have the opportunity to go to South Burlington, which has a big picture program that, which mirrors the Edge Academy as much as possible for Isaac to be a successful student without an IEP. So then I pursued this from a, from the school direction of looking for South Burlington as a placement through special ed, which is a completely different pathway to try to get to South Burlington. And we had a meeting, and Isaac had to leave, and I had to leave, and after we left, they decided to place him here where the homework and the exams would be watered down to a point that Isaac could pass. So with the most respect and, you know, relief that Isaac could try to be successful here, he was put in a program that had no self-direction and did not have any of the interests that Isaac wants to study, which is really flies in the face of kind of trying to allow him to create a niche for himself in this world. So rather than trying to force a square peg into a round hole, I'm just here to advocate for Isaac's dreams to come true. I don't want to debate the issue of an appropriate education. I'm here because I really believe I know what's right for Isaac, and that's to flourish under an I-504, not an IEP in a school like South Burlington, big picture. If you had it here, I would love to come here. At his school meeting, there were other programs that were also mentioned where he could have a self-directioned education, and all of those required him to be on an IEP. So I don't want to get into the details of that, other than that I wouldn't even be having this discussion if we had school choice. So that's why we're here tonight. So I guess I just want a chance, and I know it's hard for you, Isaac, but to put Isaac on the spot, give you a chance to ask him some questions, and have him tell you maybe what his dreams are and how he learns best.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna start out with what my hopes and dreams are for the future. As my mom said, I'm the type of person who does much better in learning and almost to the point where I can't really do it at all. I mean, without it, but I'm not the type of person that requires self-directed learning. Like, I can't, I mean, I only understood half of what my mom said, but, I mean, I pretty much do get that, I mean, if, in a regular high school situation, I wouldn't really do too well. But that's why I need self-directed learning. And my hopes and goals for the future is, are something that, yes, Essex High School could provide to some extent, but it really wouldn't help me in the long run. What my hopes and goals for the future are was, I'm obsessed in nanotechnology and computers. And for instance, like, I know six different programming languages for my age is like, I mean, that's unheard of. Well, I mean, I don't know all of them like 100%, but I mean, I know pretty much in and out to the point that like 12th graders would know what I know. And I'm obsessed in that sort of field. And I mean, yes, Essex High School teaches like computer design things, but they don't really have programming and all of that hardware and system technologies, what I would need. But not just that, but, I mean, what I found is that South Burlington would really, really, really help for my situation, because South Burlington, I can direct what I'm learning, and instead of there being a requirement or a specified due date, I can go on my own basis with certain requirements that are must, less, must, less, much, less, I'm sorry, needing than other schools. Like, instead of there being a giant due date, they could just say, this has to incorporate mathematics, science, and things, and I can incorporate that, things, because like, programming involves science, algebra, variables, all these different things that people in, from grade nine through 12 will be learning, and even higher than that. And I feel like, I feel like that South Burlington, I can get done what I need to get done in a much more efficient manner. Yes, I can get the background of what I want to get done here, but no, it's not really what I'm looking for. And it's, I mean, self-directed learning is something, I mean, I would rather have not to, not really what I want self-directed learning than something I want than no self-directed learning. It's like, I can't, like, I'm gonna put it this way. Let's just say I was obsessed in science. It could be, it could be a major amount of homework that's due, and I'm pretty sure I could get it all done. But let's just say, I don't like science. I'm not even gonna survive like a page dude, because I mean, I don't even like that stuff. And it's like, I can try, but I get so much off-task and things, and it's like, I wouldn't last a chance. But, I mean, I pretty much rely on the fact that I can, that I can plan what I'm doing to what I want to do, and also get done what meets the school requirements too. That's really what I have to say. But any of you guys got questions?
I'm familiar with the Edge program at Essex Town. Students are very happy with it. I appreciate that.
So are you all set with Isaac then? You want to hook your ride?
Yeah.
Okay, he wants to, he wants to go. So, um, please.
Yeah.
Thank you, Isaac.
Yeah, thanks.
You're doing a good job, thank you.
Yes.
So that's kind of, that's really why I'm here. I'm not, I'm not putting down the program that you folks have. Computers was not made available to Isaac at all. As a ninth grader, he would be coming in and not having any technology coursework or study available to him at all. He didn't mention it, but he's interested in an internship and these kinds of things. And he's interested in learning this way. So it's not just enough to say, well, we'll let him do a project for his final. I mean, his actual learning in his classroom time needs to be spent in a discovery kind of way. And with that motivation and interest, I, you know, I've struggled, I've got five kids, like I mentioned, and I've struggled with how to rate each one of them, and they're all different. And I have had to really call Isaac to task on some things where I expect him to fit in and do it the way other people do it. And I have to choose my battles. And education and making him learn things that he's not interested in is not a battle that I want to see him go through. I look at our world, and I have to tell you that there are a lot of people that are breaking the mold, doing things differently, and are highly successful. And this school does a really fantastic job for most kids, and I just don't think that this, what I've been offered so far really meets Isaac's needs. So I wanted to ask you to consider either sending him to South Burlington. Hopefully, this big funding issue will get resolved in a year. You can send me back to special ed, but I think I've been there. I would just hope that we can take our separate budget hats off and look at what is the most efficient, cost-effective way that we can meet this child's needs, regardless of whose budget it is, and it's to not put him on an IEP and to send him to South Burlington. That's my request here today. In terms of the scheduling, I'm prepared to stay until 7:50 for the other parent, but I wanted to let you know that one of the reasons, Rob, that I dropped out of, picked out of the, I dropped out of sight for a couple of months since this whole issue came up, is I, I was in a car, my car, and I was hit. So for a month now, I have like internal injuries, you can't see them, but I'm in pain here. So I didn't want to wait longer than I have to wait, so if we can start at 7:50, I'd be happy to wait for the other parent.
I think that would be, I think that would be wise, if we could just do it at 7:50 if you're okay.
Yeah, that's okay. If I have to leave, I'll go, but.
I just have one question for you, Ms. Bradford. You said you had a meeting that you were, that Isaac and you were excused from, but I'm not, I'm not sure I know who that meeting was with, or, so if you could just clarify that point, that would be.
It was an official placement meeting because he's on a 504, where the parties came that might be decision-makers in terms of considering Isaac's needs as a placement issue. So they had the ability at that time to decide to place him in South Burlington through the special ed process. But he was only on a 504, so I don't think it really is something that kind of jumped through the right hoops to get to the point of making that decision.
So these were, these were representatives from South Burlington? These were not representatives?
No, these were all Essex people.
These are Essex people?
All Essex people. And so like I said, the outcome of that meeting was to put him in a standard curriculum in a standard high school with watered-down expectations.
Okay.
Which is what he would have to do to try to pass here.
Any other questions for Ms. Bradford?
So you went through the process of applying to attend South Burlington, given the current school choice legislation and arrangements that exist?
Yeah, we went through the entire process, because I, I had kind of hoped that, you know, the state legislature or, you know, I had kind of hoped that, we all know there's a problem. And, and, you know, everybody has a very good perspective from where they're coming from, and I just hoped there would be an interim. I knew we wouldn't have it solved, but I'd hope there'd be an interim, like, there'd be some movement, certain number of slots, or a certain amount of funding, or a certain amount of bridging the gap. I really hope for that. So we did do all that. One of the things that I found that was really key about South Burlington for Isaac is immediately he connected with all kids of different ages based on different interests. So I mean, that, that wide variety of kids to choose from at different ages, he was right in with the geeks, the 11th and 12th grade geeks, you know, and just that ability to just latch on like that. He felt very comfortable here. And by the way, if he went here, I wouldn't put down the school at all. I mean, this place has great programs, I just don't think it fits his needs. So he's fully accepted, he's ready to go there. They have a slot for him.
Ms. Bradford, in your, in your research of Essex High School, what has offered, did you come across incentive technology assets?
Yes.
And did you see the information of computer systems technology?
Yeah, Isaac just looked over at it great length, and he just didn't feel like it met his, his needs. And I mean, I think if he went here, he'd hopefully, he could do some of that in the later grades, but that's not the issue. The issue is, is that that's not how he learns, being, being, being put in the straight-line kind of go-with-the-flow, poor selection that is required here. I think he'd just be so frustrated if he'd come home and explode. And so then I'm dealing with some behavioral kinds of issues.
So you understand that CTE programs are all day, that they are program-specific, so they look like schools within the school?
Well, they, they talked about that at the meeting, and that was not something that they recommended for him. So I don't know what the criteria is, and if I'm missing something, I'm missing something, but.
Well, maybe it's that that is an upper, that is an upper level.
Well, he's a ninth grader, so that was not even put on the table. It was Barbara Hyland, I can't rattle up all the names, but you know, the 504 person was there, Barbara Hyland was there.
Sorel.
Erin McGuire was there. Sorel.
Sorel Shepherd.
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, they know this, they know it in and out, and they did not put it on the table at all.
Just wanted to make sure we're on the radar.
Okay, I know.
Did you have staffs to be heard?
Yes.
Libby, are you here to speak, is staffs to be heard, or are you here to support our presentation? Gotcha, thanks.
All right.
Didn't know if it was the same or separate.
So, so thank you, Ms. Bradford, for your discussion tonight. Let's move on then to our school action plans. What's your preference, Dr. Dewis? Do you want to do the school action plans, or should we do our life, college, and career presentation? What's?
I'd recommend we go to the life, college, and career presentation.
Okay.
Mary Beth, are you good with jumping in now?
Yeah, great. Could we, yeah, could we log in here?
Of course.
Absolutely.
Does somebody have to log in? You know, it's 8:00 and.
I think it's logged in. I think we're in, Deb.
Okay.
Set it right on.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see what you have.
Just set my presentation aside.
Okay.
Minimize the real life.
Misbehaving.
Does that happen to you?
All right. I don't know why it's starting. Hmm? I don't know why it's starting. I can't even get the person to come up.
Libby's here.
Well, I still have to work here.
What did you do?
Can you put it in here? Can you use special vision?
Yes. Yep.
Yep. All right. We're sorry.
No, it's Y.
Okay, Y.
Yep.
All right, thanks. All right. Thank you for having me. I'm Mary Beth Portelli, Essex High School, and this is my, end of my second year as a life, college, and learning community leader, and I really wanted to present because I wanted to share with you all of the things that we've done over the last two years, and you folks were part of making a decision to restructure and create a new leadership team. And so I wanted to share with you some of the things that I think have been great that we've been doing. But before we do that, these are, I want to acknowledge all of these people. They've been on various and different communities and groups of the work that I personally have been doing and leading. So it includes a lot of people around the school, and many of these things are part of their assigned duties, but also a lot of the work is above and beyond some of our assigned duties. So when I first was accepted for this job, I had, I had some goals. When I interviewed, I was pretty articulate in what those goals were, and many of those you see in the action plan. They translated with my team's influence, the action plan. And, and so that's, I mean, you all have got this in, and it's a lot of stuff, so I don't want to do over 10 things. But basically, when I first started, one of the first things, and Libby helped me do this, is she was new and I was new, and we did a parent survey. I think we had about 240 parents return on the survey. And it was sort of the foundational work, we started to start figuring out if my goals were right online, or what I thought this position should be doing as their leader. And so these are some of the pieces of information that we asked them. And it's all about careers in college and making connections through academics to post-secondary options for kids. And so what we did is it's connected to the action plan, and you folks have seen the action plan. We're in year two, and we had some things underway. And it, you know, it's kind of a multi-designed plan. Some of it's very concrete things to do, and some of it is cultural at the high school and. So the very first one was professional development, really focusing on that and trying to get cross-curricular people to go to conferences together. I know Rob has been doing this, and he's sort of my role model in that, and he helped make it happen, and Amy Cole also helped make a lot of this happening, but, you know, trying to get people to go to different things that they normally go to, hopefully pop their vision and view on things. And so these are all the different things that we did. And our team also did the Michael Nerny brain research. This year, we did a business focus forum, where we invited in a whole bunch of business people from the community. And then there was also a student focus forum, and this was all part of trying to break down the barriers of traditional content area. And I think we've had a really great, successful year, and I really wanted to just share with you that it really has been a great few years. There's a big core of people who really have, you know, the vision of where we want to go. I think you'll see a lot of that, you know, as you, in your roles in the school board. So the second part of the thing is, on the action plan, was a student center. So we started in the fall with CTE teachers, and they just sort of emerged. We all emerged together. We started meeting and chatting and talking, and it ended up with, at the end of the year, we met with Rob and Bob, and we came up with a plan of trying to do some coordinated services between Essex High School and CTE for all of the kids, and hopefully to build upon each other's strengths. And then also look at emerging things that we need to do at the high school and CTE, where we have, where we've identified some gaps in lack of consistency. And then also one of the things is, one of my students, the interior designer too, designed, took everything from Career Center, and designed a Career Center, and she probably researched, and she just presented that last week, and I have that too, if you're interested. So then the third thing was, which we haven't gotten to yet, which is a life, college, and career advisory group, which we're hoping to do next year. But it would be getting interest from parents to help move us along, and what do we need to do to provide comprehensive and coordinated services for students that we don't already provide? And part of our research has identified that we do have major gaps, so we're trying to close the gaps on what we offer for all students. It's clearly articulated that we don't have coordinated services on career education, connecting academics to careers. We really don't. We do hit and miss, and we have some good things in place, but it's not for all students. So that's kind of the avenue that we're on. And then the last one is the multiple pathways and school-wide rubrics. And before we could do this, there was a lot of other things in school that had to happen, and some of it is cultural, and some of the other things that had to happen was finding out what some of the other learning communities were doing in their initiatives, and some other things had to happen before we could get to this phase. So in May, a small task team did identify core essential learning that is needed from all of the groups that we've had, focus forums and surveys, from all the meetings, all the in-services, and we have a draft right now, and we're hoping that next year we'll start to, start the conversations about how does that connect with permission statement, how is that connecting with common? So it includes a lot of people around the school, and many of these things are part of their assigned duties, but also a lot of the work is above and beyond some of our assigned duties. So when I first was accepted for this job, I had some goals, and when I interviewed, I was pretty articulate in what those goals were, and many of those you see in the action plan. They translated with my team of influence, the action plan. And so that's, I mean, you all have got this in, and it's a lot of stuff, so I don't want to do over 10 things. But basically, when I first started, one of the first things, and Libby helped me do this, is she was new and I was new, and we did a parent survey. I think we had about 240 parents return on the survey. And it was sort of the foundational work, we started to start figuring out if my goals were right online, or what I thought this position should be doing as their leader. And so these are some of the pieces of information that we asked them, and it's all about careers in college and making connections through academics to post-secondary options for kids. And so what we did is it's connected to the action plan, and you folks have seen the action plan. We're in year two, and we had some things underway, and it, you know, it's kind of a multi-designed plan. Some of it's very concrete things to do, and some of it is cultural at the high school and... So the very first one was professional development, really focusing on that and trying to get cross-curricular people to go to conferences together. I know Rob has been doing this, and he's sort of my role model in that, and he helped make it happen, and Amy Cole also helped make a lot of this happening, but you know, trying to get people to go to different things that they normally go to, hopefully pop their vision and view on things. And so these are all the different things that we did. And our team also did the Michael Nerny Brain Research. This year, we did a business focus forum, where we invited in a whole bunch of business people from the community. And then there was also a student focus forum, and this was all part of trying to break down the barriers of traditional content area. And I think we've had a really great successful year, and I really wanted to just share with you that it really has been a great few years. There's a big core of people who really have, you know, the vision of where we want to go. I think you'll see a lot of that, you know, as you, in your roles in the school board. So the second part of the thing is, on the action plan, was a student center. So we started in the fall with CTE teachers, and they just sort of emerged, we all emerged together. We started meeting and chatting and talking, and it ended up with, at the end of the year, we met with Rob and Bob, and we came up with a plan of trying to do some coordinated services between Essex High School and CTE for all of the kids, and hopefully to build upon each other's strengths. And then also look at emerging things that we need to do at the high school and CTE, where we have, where we've identified some gaps in a lack of consistency. And then also one of the things is, one of my students, the interior designer too, designed, took everything from Career Center, and designed Career Center and to probably research, and she just presented that last week, and I have that too, if you're interested. So then the third thing was, which we haven't gotten to yet, which is a life, college, and career advisory group, which we're hoping to do next year, but it would be getting interest from parents to help move us along, and what do we need to do to provide comprehensive and coordinated services for students that we don't already provide? And part of our research has identified that we do have major gaps, so we're trying to close the gaps on what we offer for all students. It's clearly articulated that we don't have coordinated services on career education, connecting academics to careers. We really don't. We do hit and miss, and we have some good things in place, but it's not for all students. So that's kind of the avenue that we're on. And then the last one is the multiple pathways and school-wide rubrics. And before we could do this, there was a lot of other things in school that had to happen, and some of it is cultural, and some of the other things that had to happen was finding out what some of the other learning communities were doing in their initiatives, and some other things had to happen before we could get to this phase. So in May, a small task team did identify core essential learning that is needed from all of the groups that we've had, focus forums and surveys, from all the meetings, all the in-services, and we have a draft right now, and we're hoping that next year we'll start to start conversations about how does that connect with mission statement, how is that connecting with the Common Core, and then how is that connecting with what we're expecting students to do in their ninth through 12th grade years? And so that's a bulk of what you have, it's a lot of information. So this was the draft of what we just finished, and really not too many people have seen it. The design team has seen it, and you people have seen it. It has not gone out to the teachers yet. We haven't had discussions on how it meshes with all the other things that we've been doing. CTE teaching centers, I think, have seen it. And we set it up based upon the current mission state and on the learning expectation, so it does coordinate. So then the things that happened over these years have really been a team effort, and we have a lot of work that we're going to be doing starting each year, and everybody's, I think, pretty interested. The student focus forum was probably the, doing the most interesting thing for a lot of people. It started out as a personal thing that I was doing as part of my yearly evaluation, and it ended up becoming a lot bigger program, but we really got a lot of really good information from it. And some of this information was, has also been wound into other initiatives around the school. So what we did here in February is being used by the learning community that's doing advisory, it's, you know, it's being used by the data team group, so just the basic foundation of information and the feedback that the kids gave us is being rounded in a lot of places, so I felt pretty good about that. And so these are, I mean, the day was an amazing day, I have rooms and rooms of information which are interested on it, but this is, this is kind of the nuts and bolts. We asked them a lot of different things, but this is a pullout of one of the topics. And we did ask them, you know, what were their top values, and we had kids from all different groups, we had a really great cross-section. And then we asked them if we had, what would it look like, big ones and values, what would it look like? And there it is, and you folks have seen it. And then the business focus forum, there was a lot of overlapping things that the business people said that the kids did. So that was really good, and I gave you more detail on that, because these are our community members. And not only did they do a great job of communicating to us what we, what they feel that we need to be doing, they also said that we're there if we want more things from them in the future. And so that was really important. And you can see it's really involved. And then some of the other things we do, we're trying to systemize some opportunities that were out there for kids. For example, every fall, there's a thing called Tech Jam. It was sort of randomness, who went, if we even sent kids, and so part of the thing that I've done over the last two years is sort of institutionalize that, so that we know we have a bus every year, we know we have certain teams of teachers that will chaperone, and kids have signed up. So some of that is consistency in trying to offer services to kids. And then also, we have the ever-popular internship classes that are actually increasing. Some of the, this next year is going to really focus on what do all kids have to have, and how do we provide these opportunities for all kids to have. So we've done all the foundational work, and now it's time to start figuring out how are we going to connect all the kids next year well, but what does that mean? And what does that mean for curriculum, law brands? And then some of the things that Learn to Earn is, is an organization, a program put on by Navigate, who also does our internships, and we also, it's for 10th graders, and right now, some of the things that we're focusing on next year with our CTE teachers is some opportunities for 10th graders. So we're trying to build into place a couple of different kinds of programs for that, and making sure that, you know, all the 10th graders, whether they're CTE or Essex High School, participate. So right now, we have some ideas that we're hoping to do. And then we have coordinated career services. We presented a Phase One and a Phase Two plan. The last meeting was this morning, and we came up with a couple of ideas, and we have a team of people that are willing to do this work next year, which is kind of above and beyond, but really making an effort to coordinate. And the upshot from this morning is these two things. We have testing in October, and one of it is, is 10th grade plan testing. We are going to try to also do a college visit in the afternoon instead of just sending the kids home, we want to take the 10th graders to college, we budgeted some classes. We want to make sure that all the 10th grade CTE kids also participate. We have, you know, I mean, we just talked about this this morning, it's proposed. The second big thing that we're going to do for 10th graders is the Learn to Earns in May, and rather than send them home, we want to have a post-secondary college apprenticeship fair for them in the afternoon. And then some other things that we're going to do is each month is a theme month for careers, that we're going to build a toolbox for teachers and hopefully present that at the first day of school. And each month, we're going to have a specialty speaker and panel. One of the guidance counselors is going to do TED Talks in the Black Box Theater, and we're each going to take a month to try to get some of these programs going. So we're trying to really coordinate and systematize the offerings for kids so that we don't have gaps. And so that's where it's at right now. It's been a lot, and it's been pretty interesting, and from my point of view, it's been great working with everybody, and I find that everybody really wants to improve and do better and do more for kids. I think how does it all fit together is the challenge with all the other things that we have to do. And we still have a lot of cultural work to do, because career education is really not a curriculum area, so how do you get everybody knowledgeable about it and be able to talk the talk, not just guidance counselors or not just CTE career counselors? It's one of those things that technology education, everybody has to be using the same language. So those are the challenges. And I don't know if you have any questions? I gave you a lot of information, and I have tons more information if you would like.
Well, one thing I'd just follow up with, with the recent legislation this spring, in terms of personal learning plans being required for all students, grade seven through 12, by the fall of 2015, we positioned ourselves pretty well by purchasing and upgrading next year with our Naviance, also a portal to include PLPs. So a lot of the work that Mary Beth and folks have done with advisory coming on next fall is really setting the stage for this to be systematic throughout the whole school and get those conversations not only universal, but occurring at an earlier stage. So I see this as a real good opportunity to tie in with legislation.
In looking at a range of issues that might be in Phase Two or Four, incorporating PLPs along with creating opportunities, is a part and integrated into the PLP, making that available to parents and students on the existing portal in one shot.
You mean the Power School portal, are you talking?
It's all that portal. If we just flip-flopped and had a series of mature options with one access pack, and took your ideas here and incorporated all the major base and highlights into a cross learning platform for students, now you've got all parents and students focused on key checkpoints throughout your schooling. And I think, I think the bigger picture, the detail, I know all the details are required, and all the side effects, but having informed information about all of these things in individual classes are just absolutely...
I think...
It's a conversation that...
Are you talking about the external communication to the community and the internal communication? I think that that's a huge...
It's the...
Yeah, it's a, it's a very large issue, and some of that, I don't have any control over it.
That's okay.
And we're not even sure, I'm not even sure who's in charge or how to make some of those changes, and I know the issue is, is, you know, we want the technology to work for our needs, but some of our needs are not clearly articulated.
Right.
So that's part of the problem.
Yeah, this is, have you thought about it, the communications committee, the second committee, while they might be helping this process, run form a community?
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion in terms of reaching folks in perhaps more contemporary and non-traditional ways, like front porch forum and things of that nature, emails. The other thing I was going to say to comment on your earlier point was, the Naviance is very compatible with Power School, which is, which is a good thing as we move forward, because it is a dual communication purpose, not only internally, but also parents are going to have a key role in creating with students the personal learning plans.
The difference of thinking is that things that are specific to students and families should be a series of icons in subject areas on one page, and that they can link into the bigger picture first before going to the details. And making that available for all students and parents, not only on our webpage, but possibly right here on an app, makes access and information available very easy and informative.
Well, I think, I think as we really define what that learning is for ninth through 12th grade, and then how that impacts with the business that we're doing now, and what kind of decisions and business we want to do for the future, I think that, you know, that whole communication tool has always been an integral part of, you know, what should it look like, but we, on my level, on what I'm doing, we're not 100% there yet.
Good.
And building the culture and the teaming and the common language and the common expectations is really where I'm entrenched in right now. The, and I, you know, that's kind of where it's at, but I do know that there's this bigger, bigger issue, I just, I'm just not sure how it all connects. But I do know that the external communication, the webpage and all that, there needs to be something that's different about it.
Absolutely.
So, so Mary Beth, this was, and I read this thoroughly before your presentation.
Oh, my God, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's good, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go there. Is there, is there specific things that you would like the board to take actions on in order for you to progress your work down this path?
Not right now, because one of the things that I've learned is that a bunch of things have to happen before something else can happen.
Right.
When you look at all the initiatives, you know, other people, everybody has to buy into this for it to be successful within the work, work culture, and part of that is peer-to-peer education and peer-to-peer mentoring, and, but the, but I do know, I do know that we need to kind of streamline our expenses and provide education, you know, education that's high quality, we're trying to reduce costs.
Right.
And I get that.
No.
And I, and so the, no, 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 but the thing is, is that it's not, not everybody understands that.
Right.
And when you think about redesign, it's, you know, everybody's at a different place.
Right.
You know, I'm, I'm ready to just really roll, but, but I'm, but I'm in a minority, so I recognize that people have to move along, and so as far as the board's concerned, I wanted you to be aware of all the things that have happened, because a lot has happened.
Right.
And a lot of cultural stuff has happened, which I think is really great cultural stuff. And that is the most important thing that had to happen. I've been here, this is my 34th year of teaching, so, and 30 of those years have been here at Essex, so I have a long history of really understanding the culture. The other thing is, is that, you know, there's, I think that you folks have been very supportive. I find people that I work with are very supportive. I find, you know, the illustrations and the people that help. So I wanted you to be aware of all the things that are happening, because I do know down the road, the conversation is going to be graduation requirements. It's going to be, I think career education is a great place to try out proficiency-based graduation requirements, but that's me personally. I don't know if everybody feels the same way that I do, but we've laid the foundation for the discussions to begin. I, I'm not really sure where it fits in with the colleges, so I just think being, you know, supportive and listening, and then I've seen you in the schools, and, you know, understanding that, you know, we are doing what you've asked us to do. And from my point of view, there's a lot of people who have probably been there, and really great stuff. And, and the kids, the kids have come forward, and so...
And I'd just like, I'd just like the board to know that the more recent conversations and iterations about joining forces with CTE staff and looking at a student center and career center, that's been really exciting conversation, and I know the staffs have really enjoyed that opportunity to interact across the two schools, if you will.
And, you know, and how, and how do we make that happen? But even, you know, but even like, it's at the end of the year, and the difference, you know, we've done a lot, and we've worked, and it's been really wonderful.
Tremendous.
And everybody has said, why, you know, why aren't we doing this, and why aren't we doing that? I've been here a long time. The, the real issue is, is how do you make change, that systemic change, that's not based upon person or personality? And, and, and one of the ways is, is I think the next phase is a little bit of restructuring, because we've done a lot of things, and it doesn't have to be, you know, blow up the school, okay, kind of restructuring, but it can be subtle and small kinds of things that can make real change, that can be systemic, and fill in the gaps that kids need for education. So as far as the school board is concerned, I just, I just wanted you to see the place and time we're at right now, and then look at what's happening for the future. You know, and so when things come back up again, because I really think in the next two years, there's going to be some major changes. I really do, as far as what we're expecting ninth through 12th graders to do, and how we're having them manifest and show what they're doing.
Right.
So we're kind of at a cusp of real pivotal changes.
And I'd also like the board to, I appreciate Libby's work, because she's, she helps coordinate all the learning communities and the work they do, which I'm sure can seem like an avalanche and overwhelming at times of things, but she does excellent work, so, and that's investments that you all have made in the last few years.
Did you want to say something? I have a real long story. I guess the only thing that I have to say was that the student focus forum was an amazing day to see students from every grade, every interest area saying the same things, almost to the point where I had to check to see if the handwriting was the same. Was this kid just fill in the jar? No, these were different kids. And I think that it needs to be something that happens every year, and I know that CTE was interested in having one of their own, and I think that I'd love to see them have their own, and then maybe have a joint one.
Yeah.
It, it was just really fun to see, you know, straight out of the mouth of babes type situation, where they were coming up with the ideas, and they were right on target.
And we had CTE teachers there, and we targeted some CTE kids, and also as a side because we made sure we had a combination. You know, it wasn't the same percentage, but we pleased to be sure that we had the whole thing morphed to this amazing thing, which...
Powerful day.
Do you have any other questions? I don't know if I answered your question, Jack, though.
No, no, that, that was fine. I just wanted you to know, I think this board is very supportive of all the good work that you've done, and I understand it's a work in process, and it's, what continuous improvement means is not to remain static, but continually to grow and change and meet the needs of our changing community and our changing world that our, we're sending our students out to. If there are specific things that, you know, life, college, and career community needs that you would route those up through the administration, so we can put them into our planning needs as we, you know, craft budgets going forward into next year, so...
Well, I find, I find the administration, I find the administration very supportive. You know, we have regular, Rob and I have regular meetings, he's my direct, and I also find him a very good role model. The New England, the New England group, grassroots group of educators of New England State, New England...
Secondary School Consortium.
We are going to start our summer design team day. Our very first day is looking at this really amazing work that they've done, which Amy Cole has also been part of. Self-guided study...
is not to remain static, but continually to grow and change and meet the needs of our changing community and our changing world that are, we're sending our students out to. If there are specific things that, you know, life, college and career community needs that you would route those up through administration so we can put them into our planning needs as we, you know, craft budgets going forward into next year, so.
Well, I find, I find the administration, I find the administration very supportive. You know, we have regular, Rob and I have regular meetings.
Right.
He's my direct, and I also find him a very good role model. The New England, the New England group, grassroots group of educators of New England State's New England...
Secondary school consortium.
Consortium. We are going to start our summer design team day. Our very first day is looking at this really amazing work that they've done, which Amy Cole has also been part of. Self-guided study and then best practices. And I've been using it, because I went initially with Rob two years ago, and I've been using it as the foundation for all the stuff that I've been doing. And we're going to start our first design team day with a self-analysis, which Libby's going to give her, and then start our first day with that because it's really great stuff. And it's what everybody in New England is doing, and I think that they're a little bit more in the forefront on a lot of things. So, so if you ever, I know you guys are busy, but if you ever had a chance, you know, you're always welcome to come and you're always welcome to join us and, you know, we love having you, but I do know you have full-time jobs also.
Good job.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
That's good.
Good.
Good number six, you think?
Yeah. Thank you, Mary Beth. Again, in our, the dynamic nature of our agenda tonight, now's the time that I'd like to go forward. We have the audience here to talk on the school choice and request on Act 129. So, Dr. Dewise?
Last month, the board received a visitor, who's here again tonight, Ms. McDowell. Good evening. She's the one wearing South Burlington colors, I see, back there.
It's okay.
And she posed a request to the board, and that was to consider this board's paying tuition and perhaps her child and other children seeking to go to South Burlington High School through the new Vermont school choice option. And it was a new topic for the board in some ways last month. The board asked it to become an agenda topic tonight, and you framed it with me that you say this is a two-part agenda tonight. One, a briefing from me about changes to Vermont law about school choice, and then a chance for the board to deliberate about perhaps not only her request, but Ms. Bradford's request tonight as well. So it's timely you're both here and we'll go from there. The world is changing. Certainly legislators, I think, are recognizing what educators recognize, and that is that one size does not fit all, that there is an appropriate purpose to open up choice. And that was, I think, the spirit intent, not only behind the changes to the law to take effect just in a few short weeks, but also the last school choice law that came into play about a decade ago. So I'll speak to sort of that transition period right now and where things are. The first Vermont high school choice law, which is known as Act 150, did pass back in the year 2000. When you think about the number of communities across the state that don't operate their own high school, locally, you might think of Westford as being one of those examples, that law did not change any of those conditions for those communities. Those communities enjoyed before the year 2000 and enjoyed since the opportunity to send their children across the state to any high school of their choice. And as you may know, Westford children do attend a variety of high schools, the majority of which come here, but not all of which come here. And Westford as a community is responsible for their secondary tuition and covers it not by operating a high school, but offering through tuition. So that's how those towns continue to operate. That law in 2000 did not change anything. What the law did require was that every single high school enter into a choice-region agreement. And a choice-region agreement required each of us to enter into a compact with at least one other high school. Some high schools across the state did it regionally. Nuske Valley is probably the most progressive region in which those high schools entered in universally across the region. In the Champlain Valley, it was more one-on-one, sometimes two-on-one that we'd match up with. And during that period, we entered into contracts between your board and the South Burlington Board and also the Colchester Board for choice. And the law provided for the opportunity for those boards to set money into the conversation and for money to be an option within those contracts. And that was how you set it. You set it from the Gitco back in 2000, that money would follow students, that students coming here, tuition paid on their behalf, students leaving here, tuition paid by you on their behalf. And that's precisely how it is you structured it. And each year, you may recall, around January, would refreshen those agreements. At one point, I can't remember the year, but Colchester did step out of the agreement, chose not to continue with us. They felt that it was just too heavily one-sided and was just not in their economic interest to continue it. I only recently learned that within Chittenden County, we were the only high schools across the state of all 61 public high schools to enter into a monetary agreement that elsewhere it did not involve money. So that's sort of a unique phenomenon here within the county.
Right.
Yes?
Was there a cap, like these agreements at that time? Did they limit any numbers as far as kids going either way?
Yes. Yes, there, there was the chance to set limits. We did set limits. Rob, in my recollection, is we never reached those limits either way in the coming year we're going.
Correct.
Yep. So yes, we're going to be part of that conversation. So that's sort of where we were and where we're just finishing up here and now. Act 129 got passed in the 2012 legislative session, and what it did was to effectively open up choice statewide. So no longer were choice-region agreements in place, but now students, regardless of whether you're from Westford or Tuition Town or Essex Town or Essex Junction, which has its own high school, all students across the state were opened up the choice opportunities. So think about the tuition kids, they're really not a part of this conversation. This is a new conversation now for kids in towns that operate high schools. It sets aside the terms and provisos of the Act 150 choice-region agreement. We no longer have to structure those. Instead, we recognize statewide that children, students from Essex Town or Essex Junction electing choice elsewhere have the opportunity to apply for choice elsewhere. Likewise, elsewhere have the choice to apply here or whatever. The law does provide for the opportunity for money to be part of the conversation. It is wholly and totally impractical for money to be part of the new conversation because it would involve 61 different contracts. And it would just drive any administrator or board stir crazy to be entering into contracts with all other 60 high schools across the state, what those terms, what its conditions be. And frankly, I'm disappointed, as I sense perhaps some of our visitors are as well, that money within this particular law does not automatically follow students. And superintendents in this county for the past 10 years have pushed and pushed and pushed unsuccessfully for at least ADM to be considered as a place marker, if you will, for money. That if we could count students ADM in this conversation, at least boards could be protected somewhat in that dialogue. The Agency of Education has lobbied hard against that and has been pervasive, or persuasive, I should say, in the General Assembly in knocking back that conversation each year. We continue to push it. We think there's a way to do it. The Agency of Education struggles with ways to, within the current school funding law, to figure out means and manners to make that happen. And as retired superintendent, I'll say, I don't find that to be a very reasonable argument. I think that we can do better and should do better. I will say that the legislature in this session, the 2013 session, certainly became more aware through advocacy of parents and through our own concerns and interests as well, that the bill perhaps needed a little more, a little more punch, and that was, could we figure out a way for money to follow students? They are aware of it. They did not take any action on it in the session, and nor am I aware that any action is pending in the second half of this planning coming up next January. So the cavalry is not coming, as far as I know, around that dynamic. The new law speaks to what the out-migration cap is, in other words, students leaving your school. And it is 10% or 40 students, whichever is smaller. If more students apply than spaces exist, then there's designed to be a nondiscriminatory lottery. And pity the principals, who are the ones responsible for managing that lottery. There are deadlines by which applicants need to file their information. And, you know, guidance came to us, us and parents, right around mid-December, and the deadline was about the first of February, as I recall, for you to file applications. So there wasn't a whole lot of time to monkey around. I mean, folks had to get on the stick and really make application early, and to the credit of our parents, they did just that. So application was made to South Burlington, and the principals across the region did manage that lottery. By nondiscriminatory, what that referred to within the law is that no special reasons should be applied that would bar students' consideration within that lottery, special education needs included, that that was not caused for any special negatively differentiated treatment of students. The law, I'm sorry, the guidance that came from the agency did speak to, within the lottery, some preferential considerations being encouraged. And those were things like students already there, that were already part of that choice agreement, and we're going to talk about that to the audience in a second, talked about siblings that might pre-exist in that situation, that in those cases, that principals were encouraged to use some discretion around that. And again, money can still follow the student, but it's just impractical. It just doesn't make sense for you to send me out to negotiate with 60 other high schools and then to figure out how to make that work. So I pointed the board between meetings into some guidance and some details. This particular act is embedded now within Title 16, 822A. So Al and Gary, I think you're the ones asking expressly about that, that is in the green book, it's in the law book, and that's exactly where you would find the details of that. This is the very last year for Act 150, but appreciate that we still have children who are attending school under the Act 15 conditions. They haven't graduated yet, so they might be sophomores or juniors or seniors next year leaving from Essex, in this example, South Burlington, who have expectations, I think reasonably so, to continue in their education there. And, I should say, first year, my mistake, first year for Act 129 starts since July 1st. So the guidance we talked about was published by the agency in December of 2012. Mind you, this law passed in May, so we waited rather impatiently for seven months to get some guidance on this and finally received it. Process is managed, again, by, by principals, and I can't tell you how impressed I've been with their management of a very complex and complicated process with some very tight statutory deadlines and expectations. So there is a question that you've become aware of over the winter, and that was, what's the status of those pre-existing students who are already locked in, if you will, to Act 150 conditions? Under the guidance from the agency, they do have preferred status, that because they're already in the choice game, despite the fact that the game is changing, that they should be able to continue their experience if they want to continue their experience there. So for your small group of Essex residents seeking to go to South Burlington, who are already there now and have not yet matriculated, they have the option to continue. Now, you may recall this winter, the conversation was about, well, if the Act 150 agreement's done, and that's the document that talks about money changing hands, then are we really obligated under the new law to continue paying for those, those children? South Burlington sought special guidance from the Secretary of Education. The guidance came and the guidance pretty much was, pay up. It's my recommendation to pay up. So what this board did was to bite that bullet. This is post-budget, mind you, and you will be paying into subsequent years for those children already attending South Burlington from the Act 150 pre-existing conditions. Our arrangement with South Burlington is that we pay a year in arrears. So if the students are this year, we're paying next year. If the students are next year, we're paying the year after. And our obligation at this point, unbudgeted in the future, is probably about $75,000 for those students. So as they continue to graduate, obviously you're not continuing to pay for those, those So here are the board determinant limits. You probably recall I came to you last winter, said, we've got a deadline to make, we need to publish our limits. And what will your transfer limit be from Essex High School? And you said 30. So we are allowing up to 30 students to transfer out of here and elect choice elsewhere. You're in migration with your capacity for students coming in? You said we'll take 20. So those, those are the numbers the board set, your board set. Good so far? So keep in mind that some of this cohort will be going to South Burlington, for whom you'll be paying. That some of this cohort, all of this cohort, whatever that cohort of 20 is coming in, you're educating at your expense. Children from other communities who are not coming with money, unless they come from South Burlington, which they're not. So Secretary of Education seemed to understand his guidance as he commissioned his letter to South Burlington Board. So financially, this is where you find yourselves. South Burlington Board had a similar decision to make, and that was, what is its out-migration transfer number? It also chose 30. It would allow up to 30 of its students to transfer elsewhere. What it determined for its in-migration capacity was 28. It's a reasonable number, 28. The problem with that number is the 27 of the 28 are already there under Act 150 agreements, which didn't truly open up 28 seats. You truly are opening 20 seats. They're truly opening one. So for all applicants, no matter where you're applying to South Burlington from, including Essex, we're fundamentally competition for one seat, one new seat. Your board took issue with that and said, wait a minute, timeout, Mike. We have a large tuition cohort coming in here. It approaches 200 students a year that you receive from Georgia or from Westford or from the islands. And you didn't count those kids against your cap. South Burlington did, and you appealed, you asked me to appeal to the South Burlington superintendent for reconsideration about that. And I did. So what South Burlington has done, further superintendent, is to have sought guidance, again, from the secretary, this time saying, look, we've already declared our upper limits, our limit. Do we have permission, do we have authority under the statutory guidelines to adjust and change our numbers? And South Burlington seems to be thinking about their numbers in two ways. One is, there's a big-picture number, which is a school within a school, I think Ms. Bradford described earlier. And the other is the non-big-picture cohort, but by the rest of the school. So they petitioned, not petitioned, they sought guidance from the secretary to see if they could alter and adjust those numbers. They seem to think they've got capacity now, they didn't realize they might have had it earlier. And what the superintendent said is that their board will meet this Wednesday evening on the very subject and are expecting guidance from the secretary by then and intend to make some decisions as early as this Wednesday. When I asked whether he thought it was appropriate that there'd be any communication from this board to his board before Wednesday, he said absolutely. So we actually, we'd invite this board's presence Wednesday if this board elects to send an emissary and be there to advocate for its interests. So that's the context. Obviously, I sent you a ton of materials beyond this. It goes deeper into the law, deeper into the thinking, deeper into the guidance. You saw samples of the letters that went out. You saw details of the lottery process. I didn't think that was all necessary for tonight's conversation. For any new children to be tuitioned, if you will, I don't know what other word to use, from here to South Burlington over a four-year period, you should estimate that to be about a $60,000 tuition bill over four years per student. It's roughly $14,000 a year compounded over those years. It's approaching $60,000.
Yeah. So potentially it's at 1.2 million for 20 students, but if we ever reach that limit.
Yes, although I think Rob can certainly tell you that we didn't see 20 applicants this year from here seeking to go to South Burlington.
No.
No. When I say from here, appreciate the governance barrier around this. These are Essex Town kids perhaps, okay? In Ms. Bradford's case, they're from the town?
Yes.
Yes. Who, who we haven't met yet within Chittenden Central.
Right.
Essex Junction kids, we've met, or had a chance to meet through eighth grade. So this, this bridge between Essex Town and Essex High School, and Rob's managing the process for those parents of a fundamentally different school district out there, exercising high school choices as ninth graders, gives you a picture of just how complicated this is for principals to manage.
Close to $60,000 per kid.
It's, it's roughly the tuition cost per student over four years.
To attend high school for four years.
Yeah, to South Burlington, exactly. Thanks, Erin, for clarifying. Thanks for clarifying. So thus ends my presentation. I don't know if this is enough to get you started on your deliberation or not, but this gives you a flavor for where we find ourselves tonight.
One key question, and you may not be able to answer, or maybe we need to go into executive session, I don't know. But one of the one students that they were set... But one of the one students that they were accepted.
That they had accepted.
Yeah, for one student. Is that number, I've read from the article, is that number within the law as it's currently written?
Are you saying is it legal?
Is it legally a number that fits within the criteria of the law?
The question he asked was, you just had a hard time hearing?
Yeah.
Now, the Q6 is really interesting. This is designed also as classroom space, and you're like in the second classroom right now. It actually is designed this way, believe it or not. Al's question was whether the application of the one empty seat, having declared a number of 28, is compliant with the law. I haven't looked at it. I'm not aware of anything within the law that gets in the way of that. I think it's a matter of fairness more than it is law. I think it's a matter of consistency, because that's the only school I know across the state that has applied tuition values against its capacity definition. The problem with the capacity definition is that it really is so very, very loose that you can define it any way you choose to.
That being the case, then tell me why our board shouldn't reduce its in-migration number to one.
Well, because we've already accepted more than that right now.
But effective next July.
I don't like it's in the spirit of the law. I wouldn't recommend it.
Well, then you, how can Burlington decide?
South Burlington.
Or South Burlington.
I didn't get a chance to advise the South Burlington Board.
Because South Burlington, Al, South Burlington recognizes that, in their mind, their interpretations are already taking 27 others that are already in their school system. They don't, they don't see them as only taking one. They see themselves as taking 28.
Well, do they have the capacity?
It's up to their board to decide what their capacity is.
Just a point of clarification here, the 27 others, they are getting tuitioned for.
Correct.
Correct.
From CVU, from Massfield, from SS.
Burlington.
Yes.
Yeah, the Islands.
So you mentioned the number that we have about how many tuition students?
I didn't bring that number with me. It's single digits. Oh, you mean coming into our district?
Yes.
Oh, it's approaching 200. It's around 180, 190, somewhere in there.
Yes, 190-ish.
So, Rob, I have a question. I'm not here to argue South Burlington School District, you know, decisions, right? But for Essex, how many of our students are planned to be outmigrated? Of this 30, how many are outgoing? Do we know that?
Yeah.
And how many are in migration who are not part of the tuition pool?
Okay, going out right now, it stands at four, not counting, not counting South Burlington in terms of new students. Coming in, we have 16. Recognize there is a piece in the law that July 15th, those that are coming in, they can decide to not join us with the July 15th deadline.
Right, okay.
Yep.
And these are all new?
Yes.
Right.
Correct.
Rob, for those who, I mean, obviously, if you have a lottery, you have more, they're the most chosen to go, so whether it's coming in here or going out, so if that July 15th deadline, is there like a waiting list then? I think we're then, like I said, 28 actually don't show up, the only 22 show up, but now they have several spaces.
Well, we haven't, in our numbers, we don't, we're not into a waiting list.
Right.
But, but yes, if we were.
Yes.
That's what July 15th is all about, is a chance to re-norm it.
Yep.
I have another question about this approximate 200 students that we have coming. Would you characterize all or the vast majority of them coming from places where there is no high school?
Well, as Mike said, we're talking different school choice students are different than tuition students. The number, the number Mike was referring to are tuition students. So those would be towns that do not have a high school.
So that's what we're calling them.
Tuition versus school choice.
It is important to point out that some of those students then tuition through to the Texas.
To the T E.
Because I guess in my mind, what I, what I do see as very different is a tuition student that's coming from a town that doesn't have a high school versus someone that would be coming that has a high school.
That's exercising choice.
Yeah, and these 27 students that are part of this conversation are students who are continuing on next year.
Right.
From towns that do have high schools. They have an additional cohort of tuition students that they've always enjoyed.
Right.
Based on the bus of Georgia, you know, Islands kids, same as we receive from communities without, so do they.
Then you are verifying the residency of their parents.
In which process?
In those students that are paying.
Oh, yes. Every semester we do.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Definitely.
Oh, yes. That's your central asset work for you.
So on our in-migration, in our in-migration number, Rob, those, I heard you say 16, is that we have coming in? Are those?
We're registering them this week.
Understand. And I understand that that's subject to change up until the 15th of July. Are those coming in as incoming ninth graders, or is there a mix of ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th?
Yeah, we've got eighth graders to 11th graders. We don't have any, actually, we have one, one senior.
One rising senior.
One rising senior from Lake Region.
Which is obviously different than the 27 that South Burlington have, because they're already, they're either rising sophomores, juniors, or seniors. So that's not a incoming freshman. The only incoming, potential incoming freshman into South Burlington is that one person identified there.
That's right.
And by definition, are these 16 all coming from towns that have other high schools?
Yes, yes.
Part of the choice.
Yeah, part of the choice. They're not tuitioned.
Correct.
Want me to shut this down? That's right?
Sure.
Is there even a capacity to pay South Burlington a tuition for students from Essex High School? I mean, the idea is that Act 150 is gone.
Yeah.
And it's replaced by 129.
Yes.
So what, how do we even do that? There is even a mechanism for that? Other than just like a handshake and says, that says we'll pay you?
The mechanism we've got is the letter from the Secretary of Education.
That says that, that grandfather's the current students?
Yes.
But what about new students? What about?
It's silent on that matter.
That wasn't the question posed to the Secretary by South Burlington?
But do you think there's a mechanism to do that?
To pay for pre-existing kids there?
Well, no, to pay for a new student. To pay for a freshman that wants to go to South Burlington isn't included in the one student that is available now. If we wanted to send those two kids to South Burlington?
Yes.
Is there even a way to do that?
If the board itself's on the.
The money would fall off.
But we don't have, do we have, we don't have a contract with?
No, we would need to come up with some MOU that was documented.
And am I right that the big picture numbers are not on board? That's a whole different set of numbers.
It's not my understanding. My understanding is it is part of that. But the new question posed is, can we set two numbers, one big picture, one non-big picture? That's the second question they posed to the Secretary. That's my understanding. Check, I think there's another question in the audience here.
And I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, the woman sitting there, talking about schools that have high schools versus not have high schools. I understand where that's coming from, but there aren't other schools that have a program called the big picture. It doesn't exist in Essex High School. So it's not just high schools.
Are you both inquiring about the big picture?
No. I have a, I have a son there under 150, and I'm just trying to get his brother there as a grandfathered situation because of the change in law.
First half of this agenda item, sort of, is done. I'll go over to the board to deliver it.
Okay. Just, just on this, on this second part of this deliberation, because I was not here at our last board meeting, and Ryan was here and let it just, I'm going to ask him to facilitate this particular discussion for this evening, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess we've been asked, both in our previous meeting and today, whether or not we're willing to tuition to new students to South Burlington. So that's, I think that's what we're talking about, just to set the stage. So, yeah, I mean, that's really the, what our action item would end up being likely.
So we need to take action on that this evening?
That was the, I think that was the, the idea behind the action item.
That was kind of how we left it.
Yes, at the, at our last meeting. And it was only one student last time, and now, I mean, it's, we, I imagine we'd consider Yeah, I don't know if anyone has any thoughts.
For myself, it sounds like one student is based upon program needs and the educational environment that they need to advance their education, and the second student is not in that situation. So I see those different. And I have no feedback from South Burlington as to what they're going to do or if an agreement can make them place.
Is there a time, is there a timeline that we need to be aware of in this whole process? Is there a, is there a drop dead date where this isn't even possible?
Well, the next deadline that Rob spoke to is July 15th, and that's when anyone, any student, any family that has successfully gotten a choice seat, if you will, to change their minds, and then the deck gets reshuffled at that point to figure out if there's new capacity and what that means. So that's the next meaningful deadline. The real deadline is the start of school. I mean, that's when the students certainly want to know where they're going to be, and that's late August.
And so South Burlington is saying that there's one slot?
Not anymore. They said there was one slot in addition to the 27 pre-existing.
They held their lottery, the lottery was run, and the slot was filled.
Do you have any idea how many, I don't know why you'd know that, what their application pool was like, size-wise?
My understanding, and I don't know how accurate this is, there were 22 applicants for the one slot.
There's 27.
27.
And there have been more since then, but it's hard to remember. And so to clarify, for budget modification of the district, each student, the tuition is about $15,000 each per year?
Yeah, it's approaching 15 a year, that's right. Yep. And that's unless there are additional costs. Sometimes there are specialized, special education costs that would also typically be borne by the sending district. You know, tuition students that you take in here, if they're extraordinary special education costs, you additionally bill those communities for those additional costs and services.
Well, the one bit of new news on this for me tonight that I've learned is the fact that South Burlington School District has a meeting on Wednesday, the 19th. That has a direct impact on this particular situation.
I'm kind of feeling like we kind of need to know what direction that meeting is going in.
I absolutely agree.
I, you know, I mean, I know, I know that you both publicly really want an answer, which I can absolutely understand. But I, I guess I feel as though that that's a big missing, does anybody else know that? I mean, I don't want to, speaking for everybody, just speaking for myself.
That's absolutely why I just said what I said, because I think this is, this, there, until we have a clear vision of what they're going to do with that number, we're hamstrung with what we're going to do.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think I agree. Right now, I'm not comfortable with the idea of our superintendent negotiating individual contracts about individual students to individual schools, period.
Right.
And my hope is that whatever happens on Wednesday would change that. But that seems like the scenario we're at right now. Status quo is that's what would need to happen for these two kids to attend school in South Burlington. And so.
And I'm sorry, Jack, clarify for me again, or Mike, what exactly are they meeting on on Wednesday night? Just give me that quick recap.
In speaking last week with the South Burlington Superintendent, he reported that they have requested counsel and guidance from the Secretary of Education about, A, their ability to change their caps, possibly upwards, and whether they're allowed to set multiple caps, one for the school within a school and one for the rest of the school. And upon receiving that information, that board is going to reassess its capacity decision.
Okay.
So they're looking for a cap within a specific over.
So that could be a big difference.
Yes.
They may or may not have the capacity to handle those students.
Right. So I'm sure on the board's mind is also the very notion of precedence.
Yes.
That's big.
And I think Ryan, you know, reflected that in your remarks. We've had two very caring parents come to you who have been unsuccessful with their child's choice election. I would not be surprised if there are others, and I would not be surprised that you would be potentially seeing in future years, similar requests.
Mike, is this Act 129, is this a working document, or is this done off the shelf? I mean, obviously, you said that they're aware or silent on some issues. Is there going to be, I know you said there's no cavalry coming soon, but is this someone's going to be revisited by people who developed this, or is just a, this is done, let's move on to something else kind of thing? So if we were to do something this year, would it be different and maybe not so burdensome in following years? I thought we had a good feeling.
Let me put my, let me put my amateur legislative analyst hat on. You've got 150 different representatives across the state, each which has constituency, not all which look like Chittenden County. And the minute money follows students by state law, there stands to be a potential mass exodus from some of the smaller high schools across the state. And the effect of that, the consequence of that, could be the closing of small high schools across Vermont. And I think there are sufficient number of legislators unwilling to face their constituencies with that potential reality. As a result, I think while there's some empathy, particularly among Chittenden County representatives and senators, I know Amy, you've spoken with some of those folks, there's an understanding of this, an appreciation and, and an interest in it, but it just isn't capturing the, the magic of the full, full General Assembly. So this is law. It's been law since 2012. It's being enacted right now. The General Assembly's had one more session since the law passed to have further talks about this, and my, my sense and my understanding is that that's not happening. I would say there's probably a better chance of an ADM conversation than there's a money conversation at this point. I think folks are finally starting to warm up to superintendent's idea of ADM being a proxy for, for money.
I have a different question. At the end of Act 129 states that honor before January 15th, the Department of Ed shall evaluate the funding system set forth in this act. Are you aware of what that result was?
I'm aware that January 15th is coming up.
January 15th, 2013.
Does it say 2013?
Yeah.
No, I'm here to believe you. I don't know. I haven't seen any report. I, I don't know, I, I haven't seen any report on that.
And then the second point it makes is audits of this act shall take place on July first, twenty thirteen. Those are key, two key kinds of things we should be aware of, when you get that information.
Yeah, I'll see if the January thirteenth, fifteenth you said, thirteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Fifteenth, January fifteenth, twenty thirteen.
Yeah, I can check on that.
On the funding system set forth.
Yeah, well, since it wasn't in place last January, I imagine that was a pretty short report, if the Secretary might have written. I can also check on what the audit expectation is. Well, I imagine the audit expectation is probably, you know, an inquiry coming to either superintendents or principals on July first, just saying, well, you're in and out numbers compared to what your published numbers were.
Yep.
I expect that'll be the conversation, but, but I don't know, that I'll check.
I think, I mean, for me, given the scenario, I think it would be best for us as a board to make an informed decision, and probably for the students, at, well, at least for me, it'd be better to table this into the future, sadly, again. But I'm cognizant of scheduling, as we don't have a regular board meeting in July, right?
Correct.
And we have, and it wouldn't be till August till we met again.
What's our board plan?
Well, we do have something on the sixteenth of July. That we haven't, that's an action item for later on that we haven't done yet, but that's what's, the proposal is.
So we could have an open session then, if we needed to?
Yes.
To take further action.
I, 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 I don't feel comfortable weighing in on this particular topic until I have, until I see what South Burlington School District position is going to be on this. I think there's, there's, but I'm also cognizant of the fact that we have to have the schedule thing that Ryan had alluded to, that we need to move quickly on this, because we owe it to the students involved, we owe it to the parents involved, we owe it to the schools involved as to what's going on here.
I didn't hear your question, Aaron.
Is it possible to have, like, after they have their meeting on Wednesday, can we have almost like a special hearing meeting, or just a special executive session meeting to discuss it? Would have to be another meeting we have to schedule.
The board can certainly schedule meetings as it chooses.
We can schedule as however we see fit.
The only thing I'm concerned about is, I would, I would like to see, whatever comes out of this to be reviewed by our legal counsel, from the school of legal counsel. I wanna make sure we're on solid ground here.
So question, and, and just the question before the board, and, and that's actually a statement, and, and then I don't wanna spend too much more time deliberating this, but I do wanna give it its due diligence is, Dr. Dewise, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I hear South Burlington saying is, if, if we are willing to pay tuition, they would accept students. But if it's this school choice Act one twenty-nine, there's only one seat available, and there's been twenty-seven applicants.
Yes.
Right, so, so, so quite frankly, it's a matter of money to the South Burlington School District, is what I hear it say.
Yes.
So, so, the, the question before this board is, is that, are we willing to pay up to sixty thousand dollars for four year, for four years per student, for two students that are currently in this situation, for them to go to a school outside of the district that our taxpayers are funding? So that's the question I see us facing right now, is asking the taxpayers of Essex Town and Essex Junction to pay for students to go to a school outside of the district to the tune of fourteen to fifteen thousand dollars a year for four years, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars approximately. And that's what, again, the financial part of this is where I'm, is where I'm coming from.
I, I was coming from a slightly different place in that the one student needs that program, and the other program is optional.
Correct.
That is a big difference to me. But I appreciate where you're coming from.
I, I think Jack and I would be seated squarely where you are at this point, and I think that, you know, I think unfortunately, I think probably a lot of the taxpayers were particular. It's just with the tremendous amount of money that the people in our district pay to fund our education institutions, this is just what's, what's a little tough, and I feel for me also.
Right, although, and, and, and I'm trying to, and, and let me just rephrase this around what our superintendent was saying, that, that would be mitigated somewhat if we were having an ADM discussion, not a, not a, a full tuition discussion. But nevertheless, it, it's, 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 you know, a, a proposition that would vary between sixty to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars total for two students for four years.
And that's, and then if we have additional students forward.
Exactly. We have to, we'd be setting a precedent.
Because I, in a lot of ways, I, I have to think of fairness too, because then, would it be fair, you know, if two other families came forward?
Other two?
You know, I mean, because we, we do have to be, we have to be fair, so it's, it's, I mean, obviously this is everything that we have to.
Right, these are all things that are, I, these are things that are weighing on my mind, that I haven't made a decision on one way or the other, because I think it will be influenced by what we hear back from South Burlington.
And the ADM component, that's still pie in the sky right now.
Right.
That's correct.
We can't negotiate anything around that, that's set by, that's calculated by how it's calculated, you can't.
It's about residency, right?
So.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jack, I just have one other question for you, Mike, perhaps you might shed some light on this, this is an option. You know, particularly when you, when you're talking about a family that is particularly interested in this particular specified program. I mean, is this something where South Burlington School might willing to negotiate on that tuition, might be willing to take into account this particular situation, or a different situat, I mean, I know I'm just throwing it out there, but is this something that there could be a conversation with, with that school, and say, how about, if you look at the financial ramifications, you know, both sides are looking at the financial ramifications, could, could there be a conversation about that, or is that totally?
No, it's, it's entirely possible. It's.
No, just try to find.
Within realm of possibility, yes, yep.
So let me, let me make one suggestion for, for tonight, is, do, do we wanna have, take a, a motion, or at least have the board give permission for me as board chairman to go to the South Burlington meeting Wednesday night, and, and perhaps have a sidebar meeting with the South Burlington School Board Chair? I mean, we've already had superintendent to superintendent discussion.
I would hope you'd have time to talk to the board, not just a side discussion.
I, I don't know what the protocol is to talk at, at an open session at South Burlington, maybe they need seventy-two hours' notice, or something like that, I, I don't know, but I would be.
Recognizing you're not a resident of South Burlington, you may not be allowed to speak.
That, that, yes.
That's happened to me once.
Unless, unless the board is, invites, invites someone to speak.
Right.
But, but I would be willing to have a conversation with the South Burlington School Board Chair on, on this, at least Essex, an Essex perspective of where things stand, or U forty-six perspective, I should say.
See if it's possible.
Yeah, I mean, I think Mike said that they would welcome our input at that meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I mean, that's basically where I was trying to get to, so I would, I would make a motion that we table board action until July sixteen, if needed. We can set that agenda item, you can set that agenda item based on whatever happens on Wednesday, and send Jack as an envoy to the South Burlington School Board to discuss our interest and their limits.
Record a second.
So we have a motion?
My second.
Gary, did you get that motion?
Yeah, table board meeting for action on July sixteen, we've got that.
Yeah, and sent.
And authorize the board chairman to.
Yeah.
Represent U forty-six to have a conversation with the South Burlington Chair.
We have.
Second, was it?
Second by Aaron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion passes five mill. I will, I will have to let the board and administration know how, how this is gonna be executed, I don't know right now how we're gonna do that, and, and, you know, it'll have to happen sometime tomorrow, but I'll get, I'll, and, and maybe Mike, you can help facilitate that. I, I know the South Burlington School Board Chairman, but I wanna work through the right channels and protocols so that it's not new news to them that this is coming forward. And I will, just, just bear in mind, both, both for our visitors, as well as our board here tonight, what I've, if, if the numbers that Ms. McDonald, I heard you say is correct, there were twenty-seven applicants for one particular seat. At the time of the lottery, that other districts, including Chittenden South, Chittenden East, Burlington, et cetera, may be in the same position that U forty-six is, trying to lobby and champion for their students to get that, to get that seat as well. So, so we'll have to, and I have no vision, and I don't think you do either, Dr. Dewise, of other districts that are trying to, to have this discussion with, with South Burlington, so. A question, yes, Ms. Bradford?
A question and a piece of information. When I spoke with South Burlington, they said that they would accept as tuition the amount of money that the student would have had to pay here. In other words, if they have a higher tuition, they're not asking for that. But I just, so I just wanted you to have that piece of information. The other thing is that, you know, I heard the, the concept of fairness, and I, I think that we all wrestle with that, and I'm gonna try to see things through the eyes of my child, that it's not fair that he was born with some very unique learning styles, and it wasn't fair that his parents are paying taxes in Essex, you know, so it's not just going to another school, we're, we're peeing for him here, and there isn't a program that he can thrive in here. And so, I mean, the obvious thing to me would be, well, can't we share this? You know, I heard an entire discussion about one school or the other school, has there been a discussion about sharing it? What if parents would like to contribute? I mean, I, I'm really trying to skin this cat in the most creative way we can to make it work for children, that's where I'm coming from.
Has your request changed then, Ms. Bradford?
Well, my, my question is, moving forward, would you, would the board please be willing to consider alternative ways of funding than I heard discussed tonight?
I think what the board's reacting to is your specific request that the board paid tuition for your son.
Well, that, that, that was the request I came into, but as you're solving the problem in terms of your sense of fairness about setting precedent, I'm trying to respond to that by offering different ways of looking at the concept of fairness.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to say, as a non-resident, because I live in the junction, I was able to speak at the board meeting, I think that would be an issue.
Oh, good.
I was just at the last board meeting. And also too, listening to you, of course it seems silly for me to ask that you pay my son's tuition at South Burlington, but in light of the fact that you had a position of Act one fifty that put my child there, and then you changed, you know, you changed the game on us, that, that's really, just so you understand the motivation, my son is the only child with a current sibling at that school, I, I guess, as you had said, I'd like you to maybe broaden your scope of what you're looking at, because asking the community to pay an extra sixty thousand, which I'm a part of this community, I, I have issue with that. But if you look at it through the lens of people who are stuck between the change in law, a lot of us have been grandfathered throughout our lives when that happened, so I just want you to understand my request, not, and I'm naive not to take it from a financial point of view, but I am taking it from a family, community point of view. Thank you.
Getting our legal counsel, see what, what we can do as far as these options, you know, doesn't all have to be long enough, you know, hey, you know, the talking, that was good advice, and, nothing won't have all that time, obviously, Wednesday, but, because I'm off work, I wouldn't say for that well.
And I know big picture is a different story, so I think when you explore this further, you will find that there are different ideas around school choice for big picture because of the way that program is run.
Okay, thank you. We have been ping ponging around on our agenda this evening, so I'm gonna ping back to school action plans.
Great.
And, and Rob is here to talk about EHS school action plans, and Bob is here to talk about CTE school action plans. Let me just say, real quick, before we get into this, for both of our schools, EHS and CTE, I had the privilege of attending three events in the, in the recent past. One event was the Academy of Visual and Performing Arts, Capstone Project, thank you, I forgot what, what I was trying to say, and, and the work that those seniors did in order to fulfill their requirements for the AVPA, which, which was outstanding. I had a second opportunity to attend a CTE recognition night, which is, in my view, one of the most underrated, but, but most fulfilling things you can do as a school board member, is to go to CTE recognition night and see the enthusiasm and, and pride that our students take in the programs that they're participating in at CTE. And then lastly, this past Saturday, I had the privilege of handing out the diplomas to the EHS graduating seniors, and, and probably one of the most emotional graduation ceremonies I've attended in a long time, it, it gave me great pride to, to see those students graduating, be part of that, be part of that ceremony. So, so Director Travers and Principal Burton, well done for, for what you guys were able to accomplish this year, it was, it's been a privilege to be on the board in, this past year, and, and see the, the good work that your staff, your teachers, and your students were able, were able to do, so, thank you. That said, school action plans, and I, I can flip a coin on which one we wanna do first, so I, Rob, if you wanna start, that would be, that would be fine.
Yep, so on the Essex High School Action Plan, just to refamiliarize everyone, we've completed year one of a two-year plan, kind of at the same time as we're wrapping up year one, as you recall from the last meeting, we received our NIASC report, which had forty commendations and thirty-two recommendations. So a lot of our action plan was based originally last year in regards to the cell study that took about eighteen months to put in place. So as we report out for this board meeting, I hope you receive the color-coded copy in regards to the yellow highlighted areas indicating areas that have been started in terms of the action steps, resources, timeline, and we also included tasks associated with the action steps. And the green is in regards to items that we haven't yet. the action steps. And the green is in regards to items that we haven't yet started, but will start in the very near future. Mary Beth alluded to a little bit in her life, college, and career learning community report tonight, that there's work that's going to be done by the design team this summer. And some of that work, including the green that you have in the org notes here, in terms of how, how we can best tackle the items that are yet to be started in our action plan. And at the same time, which is not totally separate work, how we can attack the thirty-two recommendations that we received in regards to the NIASC report. So that's a very important next step that will occur in mid-July, actually right around the sixteenth of July, to get this off the ground. But I guess collectively, since I know you've received this and you've had time to look it over, I think we've made great strides. And collectively, we've reached tentative agreement with a side letter with the association in regards to the advisory moving forward, which is a longstanding recommended best practice, and how we can do it effectively for our students, and yet meeting the current contract language that is part of the, part of the agreement. So I'm excited there. I know with some of the work that Amy Cole has, has authorized moving forward, there, besides the, the work that needs to be done continuing the transition to the Common Core in mathematics and literacy, and the Next Gen Science Standards, there's also some work, or excuse me, some money that will help pay for work for teacher-led groups to create a toolbox, if you will, for students, for teachers, as they meet their groups of students next year. And the advisory, the advisory is going to be couched two ways. Based on the Student Focus Forum that was held in February, the students said if any advisory is going to start, we would want it to occur once a week, and we want it to be comprised of mixed grades. Well, those two things are being met in the model that's being brought forth for next year. It's going to be mixed-grade students, and it's going to be once a week for thirty minutes as a, as a first step. The exception to that is an interest-based advisory model, which would capture the AVPA students, who those teachers would like to work with the students based on interest and by strand. So that's an interesting way to start the first year in terms of meeting the, the students' needs with a vast majority of the advisories that will be put in place, and at the same time, have an interest-based group with the AVPA, which has had some models, or some models over the past few years with their seminar experience. So, and that was one of the, the biggies that we had in terms of our to-do list moving forward this year. And that's, I think, with, with ample input from all the stakeholders, that's been achieved moving forward. A lot of the items in green are dealing with data and local assessments moving forward. There's been talk at the district level in terms of, of looking at an individual or individuals to look at key metrics as we move forward, and how to couch that and make it accessible to the classroom teacher, so that they can access data beyond the national indicators that we've got, put along with our local indicators like midterm exams and final exams, or common unit exams within, within a content area. So that's a lot of what you see as is indicated in green in terms of moving forward for next year. Another piece tying in is the professional development, which I provided as a follow-up to this action plan update. And I can assure you that the work that we have to do, there's no shortage of as we transition to Common Core. Today, the, the world language teachers spent all day at Middlebury College, as we've been able and is privileged to work with them with the interactive program based on Jill Prado's work with the Rowland Foundation Grant. So I'll be really anxious to get feedback on them and what the next steps are moving forward with that process next fall. But Math Common Core worked hard, started today on the geometry. What that class is going to look like moving forward with the, with the Common Core standards, the teachers with the in-service time provided this current year have, have realigned what Algebra I is going to look like moving forward with the Common Core. There's concurrent conversations with a shift in probability and statistics as to what that's going to look like, with some talk of, we don't have any semester-long courses currently in mathematics, but there's genuine interest in having that conversation evolve as to perhaps creating that with the modification focus, if you will, with math moving forward. Next Gen Science Standards teachers today spent for the, just the second time they've had the opportunity to meet as a group since the Common Core, or the Next Gen Science Standards, Amy, they came out in April, May? End of April, early May?
May, they came out late.
Yeah, late. So there hasn't been a lot of time for that discussion to occur. Point being made there, when the previous standards came out, the ninth grade science offering was modified significantly to incorporate physics to meet the kneecap test for juniors. So there's conversations that have to occur, obviously, to see what modifications, if any, need to be made going forward. And clearly, there hasn't been enough time for that to occur. So it's, it's really the meat and potatoes as we're moving forward, in addition to some of the transformation work that you've seen, case in point, Mary Beth's tonight working with CTE and other initiatives. So without getting really specific, I'm going to hold at that point and see if you have any specific questions in regards to the action plan. But it's an interesting place to be with the second year of the action plan, starting, going to be started to be implemented based on the NIASC report, and Mary Beth referred to the global best practices. Those are similar recommendations from the New England Secondary School Consortium that they couch. They're very similar. They're not separate bodies of work. But yet, it's, it's more consumption for staff in a time when they're, they're very busy. And literacy is not for just the English teachers. That's, that's a work that Eric, Eric Leclair has undertaken quite effectively, in my opinion, this year, and that will continue next year with literacy across all content areas to improve our reading and writing, point blank.
On page six.
Yep.
It seems to me that we're trying to be more responsive, monitoring student outcomes, providing feedback to teachers on a much faster rate.
Mm-hmm.
When we looked at that, Power School versus Infinite School applications that did those functions, Infinite School seemed to be more in line with that and less on administration. And so my question is, if you're going to look into Power School, and when will that be done? Because the lead times on these things may be a year or two.
The lead time on?
There may be a long lead time before you can get things either internally modified or a different application to provide functions that provide the staff with that level of feedback and timeliness.
I think part of the issue is, is not necessarily whether it was Infinite Campus or Power School, although I'm sure that was taken into consideration when the model was chosen. I think it's, it's, it's a matter of being able to peel the onion back far enough by the classroom teacher to be able to access the data in a meaningful way without creating yet another significant training, which means more time and energy. And we're trying to simplify that piece, and at the same time, use the local assessments that we have more intentionally and effectively to get information on what our stu-, especially combining that work with the change in standards.
This is so key in the process of student learning and feedback and working with staff. Could, could you outline a plan of how this is going to be done at some point?
Yep.
I mean, you know, I'd just like to know we have a plan going forward to accomplish those goals. And that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I can have a, I can have a plan for you.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's pretty good. I mean, I, I applaud the, the year of changes, moving in the right direction. And you've had better feedback on that now, on the results.
Yes. Yep.
Rob, what, um, you know, the feedback that we got from NIASC this past year, have you been able, as you've created, as you've crafted up the year, uh, school action plans, CPCI, what, what the, what kind of, and I've got my finance hat on tonight.
Yeah.
Very much. But, but what the, what, what the implications are financially for this? What, are there additional resources that you're going to be asking the board to help? And I recognize this is for next year, and we've already got next year's budget.
Right.
Accommodated for. But it's, it is continuous improvement that we're looking at. And, and, and it's, it's, some of these initiatives will go beyond just this current year, right? Is, is this, i- is it something that the, the board will see as we go into next year's budget development, changes as a result, or adds as a result of NIASC feedback?
That's possible, but I, I think that's a bit premature, only in the sense that I shared the results with the board last month.
Right.
Teachers got it the next day. In light of in-service obligations to, to date, we haven't had a chance yet, even as a design team, to go through those results yet. So I think I would be, even August, I could give you an update based upon our summer work. But I think early, certainly early in the next school year, prior to going into budget, I would have a better idea.
I, I mean, I, I guess what I'm asking for is give us some guidance.
Sure.
On this. I mean, it's not anything that, I'll speak for myself as a board, and it's not anything I don't want to do. I just want to characterize what.
Sure.
What the impact is, you know?
I feel good about being able to get the updated portal in Navient sooner rather than later. We were able to use some, we were able to use some of our grant money that we had left over to purchase it by the end of this fiscal year, which is going to put us ahead of the game in certain aspects, in terms of the career education piece, and incorporate families, parents, to be specific, with the students and the staff.
Right.
Moving forward. So I think we'll be way ahead of the game when that law kicks in, which is necessary, whether it's law or not. But yes, I can give you some suggestions, clearly.
Thank you.
It's, it's more now a matter of not having enough time as we're wrapping up one year, trying to plan PD for next year.
Right.
But there's a lot of good, just want to reiterate what Mary Beth said. There's a lot of good work going on with the transformative changes. It's kind of, it's an exciting place to be. The other, the other piece with that is, as years go by, to get more staff members to the Rowland Conference at UVM in September, and to get more teachers, which we're doing, to the three different New England Secondary School Consortium conferences, where you get to rub shoulders with other teachers throughout New England and see what they're experiencing, so that you can have an appreciation of what's working. You don't have to reinvent the wheel each time. And, you know, proficiency-based learning, that's, that's coming down the pipe. So there's a lot of good things going on. I feel good about where we're at.
Thank you, Rob. Any other questions for, for Rob? Thank you, Rob.
Yep.
Bob?
My turn.
The floor is yours.
Thanks, man. So as is the case at Essex High School, our action plan is a two-year plan. I think actually it could be considered a three-year plan, as action plans are supposed to be closely aligned to professional development. And so what you were sent were three documents, two looking very similar. I sent you a action plan from this past year with a column added to the progress update as of June. I then sent you a draft for the 2013-14 school year coming up. The reason I sent you that is, if you focus on the middle columns, the performance targets, I think you'll see more quantitative measures, following a conversation I had with Superintendent Stewieza Finova. We talked about the, the measures that are provided for the center through our Perkins annual report. You'll see some of that information listed in the performance targets. There are no major changes to the outcomes or the action steps, some minor adjustments in next year's plan. The information that you received on the progress update, I won't go line by line, but I wanted to pull out some themes in that progress. It was both qualitative and quantitative, the information that I gave you on the progress for our action plan from the past year. Under student learning and achievement, the outcome focusing on increasing the percentage of students who are prepared to college and post-secondary. That first statement I starred, we do a, we do a exit survey for our seniors sometime a month, about a month before we're, we're at recognition night. Forty-nine percent of our seniors report that they are college-bound next year or post-secondary bound, as one percent is for another. Sorry, they're one form or another. That's self-reporting, so it's not, it's not been validated through any enrollment numbers. But our last, our last metric on that was thirty percent of our students reported post-secondary experiences 2012. So if it's to be believed, and I think it is, we've, we see about a nineteen percent increase in students who are self-reporting as interested in going to post-secondary. There's a theme throughout all of the, all of the progress update that refers to staff advisories. You know, this year, it's been a large undertaking of CTE to establish faculty advisories. We have completed our work this year with, with the, with the staff. They, they have written seven different action plans, following seven different fo-, focus areas. Every staff member has selected onto an advisory based on their focus interest. Every one of those teams has written an action plan that will be launched in August of this coming year. And we are setting aside staff meetings once a month, where the staff advisories, with the help of colleague facilitators, will do the work on those action plans. Pretty exciting. I start at the bottom of the first page. ELL Services continue to be focused for CTE this year. We, was our first year where, in which we required all ELL students, whether they were adults with, adults without, or school-aged students, to stage a course for credit. I think we're the only center of statistics in this back. So it's been, it's been a successful year for that. Under the, under the quantitative category, one of our focuses was to improve our performance on state-required technical assessments. And so I have some numbers to report for you. Professional foods pass rate last year was sixty-four percent. It's ninety percent this year. Automotive pass rate was forty-eight percent last year, it's sixty-four percent. Building trades was sixty-nine percent last year, it's eighty percent, eighty percent this year. What's not there is natural resources, forestry, which came through late. I don't have the numbers for what it was last year, but I know we've made significant gains, because this year it's ninety percent. So in those four programs, given the focus of the faculty and the administration around test preparation, aligning their instructional practices in the curriculum to the, the blueprints that the state provided for us, I think we've had great success in those areas. We are in the first year launching graphic design, digital publishing, computer animation, web design, and computer systems tech. And I don't have numbers for those yet, because it's pilot. And next year, we're doing the work of the state to launch health sciences. So more to come. The state's goal and requirement is that all approved programs have state-approved assessments. assessments. Um, and, uh, more to come on that. Uh, third page, under quantitative, again, you know that there's been a, a large push for the last few years, um, at CTE, um, to enact the gender equity plan. Our goal was to increase both the, uh, enrollment of non-trad students and the completion of non-trad students. Hand count of all of our programs for next year shows that automotive is a non-trad program for females. Our enrollments for that this past year were two females in the program, next year, ten. Childhood ed, non-traditional for male, this year two, next year three. Computer systems tech, non-traditional female, two this year, three next. Cosmetology, non-trad male, zero this year, three next year. Dental, non-trad male, three up from two. And engineering, non-trad female, two up from one. We have, we held pretty steady in all of the other programs that are considered non-trad. Not all of our, our programs are considered non-trad male or female, they're considered neutral. Pro-foods would be a neutral program. Um, I will say that I take credit for those numbers through the gender equity, uh, plan. I think, uh, we shouldn't, we shouldn't accept or hand out too much credit, because a real important thing that isn't measured in these numbers is, not only do we enroll them, but are our practices strong enough to retain them and make sure that they complete? So it'll be interesting to follow this next year's program, to see how they're doing. I guess that's all I want to say about the update. You can read the rest. Quick review of our CTE professional development plan, you have that document in the, in the org notes. Uh, we continue with a three-pronged approach. Our three, um, professional development tracks next year will be applying appreciative inquiry, gender equity, and technical education, in this concept called independent professional development. No changes from what we did last year, except that instead of designing those three tracks to be, uh, credit-bearing, and teachers have to select whether they're going to go credit or not regardless, um, they were required to do all the work this year. Next year, we designed it so a core section of all fits into the professional development schedule, so all teachers will be enrolled in that and can complete as part of their contracted professional development schedule. Those who are interested in doing it for three credits through St. Mike's can, um, sign up for additional work and FaceTime with the teachers. And so, um, we'll, we'll actually be able to meet both, um, our goal of having them well-trained, um, that fits within the contract of time, but also providing anyone who's interested in, um, earning graduate credits for their iffy-difies, for their individual professional development plan. Um, it was received well in our in-service this morning. Uh, also on the schedule, you will see there are two optionals. Uh, the Center for Technology Essex has, has committed to sending a core group of staff to a statewide conference this August. And something that I'm proud of is, uh, August seventh and eighth is our facilitation skills training, um, for all of those, all of those advisory committee, uh, members who are volunteering to actually step up and facilitate their programs, who may need some training this summer. Let this quick, it's late, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The only question I had to do with enrollments, it looks like you're pretty much on track?
Overall enrollments? Um, we hold steady and we are on track. I can, I can have any, um, report sent, if you want. But I'm, I'm reluctant to pull it, because to, every day, we add, we take away, and through the summer, we have to figure out what those ghosts are. You know, and ghosts in the center, those students who are enrolled, planning to come, and then for whatever reason, in August don't come. So, um, our numbers look really solid. Um, I, I reported to the board that we're mostly full in all of our programs. Key work that has to be done is, um, pre-tech students who have been accepted need to qualify by having their required credits.
Right.
We wouldn't know that until their grade reports are done. And then, I think the work over came in the ones that said, that we said have us less than.
It's not those channel three ads, they're just super effective. And just, they were just right there.
Yeah, yeah. We have, um, we have the luxury of school testimony.
Yeah.
Bob, those are very impressive, uh, improve, you know, upward improvements on the career-ready for profoods and automotive tech and the building trades there. I mean, almost to the point where it seems like it's not statistically possible that we could have jumped that much, so that's, that's well done. I, I also, just a question on the gender equity, uh, topics. What, I mean, we talk about females going from, uh, from two to ten of, in automotive and, and, uh, zero to three in, in Cosmo One, right? Can, can you just give us a quick, what that means? That's two to ten out of a total automotive technology size of how many students?
Um, we're, I think we're holding steady at thirty-six students right now.
All right, so that's, so that's, I mean.
Significant.
You know, going from two out of thirty to ten out of thirty, right? I mean, that's.
Yeah, that's significant.
That's significant.
Yep. Uh, modest gains in the other areas. We are required by the state, they set a goal that, with the federal government, that we have non-trad enrollment at sixteen point eight-five percent. Um, we are hovering around thirteen percent right now.
No, I, thirteen.
Point eight-five?
Yes, the point eight-five, I mean, only in the.
Right. Right, well, furthermore, we, uh, we set, we have, uh, federally set goal of, uh, completers for non-trad to be sixteen point seven-five percent, so, um, go figure.
Could look like a terrible person.
Yeah. We hover around thirteen and fourteen percent in both of those areas. Very hard, very hard to get young adults to, to go into a non-trad program.
Yeah. And, and I know, I, uh, I was, I was aware this past year, I wasn't part of it, but the Girls Can Too program to kind of introduce, uh, young women into non-traditional careers, I, I think is, is, uh, time, time and energy well spent.
Yeah, that was a great initiative, and I wanted to point out that, uh, one of the grassroots initiatives from one of the instructors was to, uh, open up, open house to some, to, um, middle-school age students by providing them hands-on, um, hour times with the, with the instructors and the programs. And that really played out to be a, a non-trad opportunity for one of the students, because as they came through the door without any work from us, a large group of females went to engineering and to automotive, and, um, it was gratifying to see, so, um, we're working on a lot of different things.
Good. Any other questions for, for Rob? Thank, thank you, Rob. So, again, kind of skipping around here, we, we have, I guess the, there's two items that we have left for this evening, uh, one of which is our, uh, two, two items that require board, board act, well, three items require board action. One is our, our board visioning, uh, project. It was included in the org notes, uh, I believe.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. The.
It's right after Mary Beth Perelli's presentation.
Yep. It, for, that was, that was included there. Uh, and unfortunately, I knew that Brian Donahue wasn't going to be able to make it this night unless you have a, a status update on.
Seven-six CBO final.
Oh, okay, so, uh, Brian was at the lacrosse, uh, championship this evening, and, and was going to facilitate the discussion on, on the board planning. But I did get an email from Brian here, and just to counsel the board on this topic. He, he said, uh, "The board visioning project should be a fairly quick up or down, um, where we want to go, based on the information in the org notes. The board has had time to contemplate the direction, review the proposal, and reach this, us, reasoned determination. Although the, the proposal is very detailed, we'll, we'll be finding our way through this process." And that if we go down what's in the proposal here this evening, it's going to require each board member to, uh, assume some kind of, uh, leadership and ownership role as we go through this, this initiative. So, uh, I want to, I want to, you know, I'm cognizant of the time, but I want to give this the, the due diligence it deserves, recognizing that our subject matter expert is not here this evening. We still, uh, uh, need to take a board action as to whether we want to implement this, this process and go forward with it. And, uh, so, any, any questions, comments, or discussion? On this?
Ten thousand for four years.
So, I'm sorry, speak up again.
Ten thousand for four years.
Ten thousand a year for four years, or is it ten? Okay, that's, I, I kind of remembered it was twenty thousand a year for two years, but it all comes out the same.
Yeah, I think it was forty, you told me, right? Nobody's going to shuffle it.
Shuffle it.
Yep.
So, so this is a, a forty thousand dollar issue.
This is a new number at the missing, at the name you missed.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, uh, do we have a motion to approve this board visioning concept is outlined in the org notes?
So moved.
Moved by Al. We have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five-nil.
Who will sign the agreement, Jack, you or Brian?
Uh, I, you know, I would personally feel Brian would be the better choice. Uh, he's, he's been in the throes of negotiating this and probably knows it best.
Thanks.
I'll, I'll defer to him on that particular topic.
Thank you.
Next, we have the, uh, Annual Board Planning Day. As, as was discussed at our last board meeting, which, uh, I unfortunately wasn't able to attend, we had settled on, excuse me, uh, July sixteenth as the board planning date. We also have, uh, been offered, uh, again, through Brian Donahue, the opportunity to use the VPR space over at Fort Ethan Allen, which we were at a couple of years ago, um, that we did our training session there. And he sent me an email today, uh, confirming that he can make that space available for us. Uh, I understand that the, the, uh, timing that we had previously discussed would be starting sometime after lunch that, that day of the sixteenth, and then continue on into the evening. And I wanted just to, to confirm that, that the, the full agenda for that board planning day is, is still to be promulgated, but nevertheless, part of that agenda will include the board visioning project that we just, uh, approved. So, I, I, the board, the board action for this evening is to, uh, confirm and commit to that July sixteenth date, and, uh, settle on, on the location for that, which, which, uh, Brian has offered up to be the, the VPR Performance Studio Space at, uh, over in Fort Ethan Allen. Gary?
Yeah, over at Ethan, so VPR Performance Space, where's that Ethan?
At Fort Ethan Allen.
At Fort Ethan, thank you.
At the VPR Studios. So, I, I will make that motion to have the, the planning day on the sixteenth.
I'll second.
And Al will second.
That's good. I'm assuming it's around one o'clock.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We'll go.
Okay, good.
Okay?
Yep, sounds good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes, uh, five, five-zero.
Should Cindy work with any particular board member on logistics for that day?
Again, I, I'm going to defer to Brian, because he's the, uh, you know, he's our point of contact over there through VPR, and it makes probably the most sense to, to have him facilitate that.
And also the lunch arrangements, whatever.
I think it's going to be more of a, a dinner kind of thing than lunch, because we're going to come in starting at one.
Okay, that's fine.
And then work through the, work into the evening with, so.
That's good.
Okay?
So is this, um, part of that, I don't know if you should work on the agenda, is going to be figuring it out, that our decision about the Act one-twenty-nine, so is that going to be, we can like to publish to that per section?
Uh, very, very good question. Uh, we, we need to set the agenda for that evening.
Right.
Um, what I would like to propose is, uh, and I don't know how to do this best in a, in an, uh, open forum, Dr. Deweze, but what I, what I learned from the South Burlington Board Meeting on, uh, Wednesday night, to communicate back to you along with a recommendation of whether we need to take action before July sixteenth, or we can wait till July sixteenth. So I will just, if I could communicate that directly to you with a recommendation of where we need to go, I think is the way that, that I want, we should go here. Okay?
Great.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay, uh, next we have the consent agenda. The warrants have been making their way, or have made their way around the, uh, approved meeting minutes, which were included in the org notes here.
We've got some additional materials for the consent agenda?
Oh, additional materials?
What I've got are some additional minutes. Um, these are materials that just came in after the orgs went out. I've got four additional professional appointments coming around, so it's one paperclip per person.
One of the, oh, one paperclip per person.
Yeah, they're already set up. Plus a related leave of absence, uh, attendant to one of the, uh, appointments.
What is that?
Okay.
Appointed, uh, Act one-fifty-three, okay, let's get that sent.
Item seven?
Oh, I didn't, you know what? I, I, I didn't consciously, well, we, let's finish the consent agenda, we'll come back and talk Act one-fifty-three.
Sure.
Okay? I'm, I'm, good catch, thank you for keeping me honest.
So, Jack, maybe I can summarize what I think you now have in the consent agenda. You've got the warrants, uh, which have already circulated. You've got meeting minutes that were included not only in your org notes, but are coming around now as well for additional minutes. You've got a series of, uh, professional appointments, and there were three included. Uh, Don Dwyer, uh, math intervention specialist CTE, Andrew Roy, counselor at the high school, Thomas Farley, special educator at the high school. You've got four additional appointments before you now, Kelly Green-NiHagen, Practical Arts, Martine Gulick as librarian, Matthew Zimmerman, profoods, and Peter Falby as forester instructor, the last two at CTE. And related to that, you also have a leave of absence because of one of these folks moving from one position into the library position for the year. Beyond that, you've got your tan, your tax anticipation note, uh, for approval, and I also recommend that you ratify contingent upon the association, uh, similarly ratifying the 2013-2014 Teacher-Master Agreement.
Thank you, Mike. So just to, again, to reiterate, it's the warrants, it's the, uh, uh, meeting minutes as sent and as distributed, the, uh, recommended for, for professional, recommendations for professional appointments, the tax note, uh, bid approval, and the ratification. Is there anything that we want to pull from the consent agenda? Uh, I would like to just pull the ratification for, for a quick moment.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, all in favor to approve the consent agenda? With the exception of the Teacher-Master Agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes five, five, zero. I just want to, uh, add that the ratification of the Teacher-Master Agreement is, uh, contingent upon the association's first pass in this. It's, so, so our action here is, is, is just that, we're not, we're, we're not ratifying it tonight, but our ratification becomes effective upon the association's ratification. Just wanted to clarify that, so.
Yeah.
Okay? So, uh, motion to approve that, uh, 2013-2014 teacher agreement as, uh, pending ratification from the association.
Right, so we'll.
Moved by Al. Second by Aaron. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? That passes 5-0. Act 153 update.
With the board's approval, could we send the principals home?
Yes. We can send the principals home.
Thanks very much, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Act 153, this is an update mainly for the non-issue board members. Meant to do this last month, apologize that I didn't. What this addresses is the extensiveness of Act 153, which calls for there to be centralized services moving, migrating from the school district level to the SU level within SUs. This does not affect SDs, it affects SUs. The one slice of the pie where we had not centralized services per the law yet is that of special education personnel. We've got clarity on that with respect to it being professional services. Support staff services are not necessarily needing to be managed in that way. What the issue board has determined is that through the policy environment, within this issue, it is absolutely proper and appropriate and practical to manage that at the policy and procedural level. And the board has adopted at first reading the policy. Board has also reviewed at first opportunity the procedure, and this will become the district's policy later on this summer at the next issue board meeting. We have taken the opportunity to put the agency of education on notice of our direction on this, why we think it's consistent with the spirit and tenet of the law, why we think that this makes perfect sense for this organization, and that's where we are. So what that means is that with this policy, thank you, Jack, with the policy moving forward to that, one-eighth of your personnel will not be moved from U46 employment to CCSU employment vis-a-vis your special educators. Instead, they will remain employed at the local district level. However, once a budget's been struck and once individual employment contract's been let, then the superintendent has the authority to transfer someone in season from one district to another. That is meant to be a temporary, short-term stopgap arrangement. That person will still be employed at the sending district level. The receiving district would owe the sending district full expenses for that transfer. And I've got to tell you that with Aaron McGuire's good work with the annual service plan, with your good work around staffing within your budgeting conversations, I don't see this happening hardly ever. Someone asked me what frequency, and I said perhaps once every five years. I mean, it would require some momentous shift of special education need from one district directly to a different district, which will result in overage and underage of capacity levels. So I just don't see it as being a real risk factor, frankly, for this organization. You know, the unnecessary costs and ordeal of bringing on additional collective bargaining unit, of certifying that group, of negotiating addition to contract, just frankly, isn't necessary. And as a result, I think that we continue to do business the way we have. And it's because of the goodwill and the good intentions of the three school boards that attend SSU that this sort of thing is possible. So I commend the three boards for their continued interest and willingness to work together for the good of the whole. That's where we find ourselves. So I want to be sure that non-issue board members had a chance to understand how we were approaching that.
At one point, I thought we discussed in the CCSU meetings some special needs regarding contracts, or maybe it was health, health or contracts that were implied from this change. Do you don't see that?
What I think I recall about that conversation was that individual salary and benefits are going to remain consistent with their originating district or the sending district. If there's any change in salary, that that's just where the cookie crumbles, that person would be held harmless in that transfer to whatever they're starting from.
Right, okay.
Yep. So just a quick briefing. Certainly your issue board reps can talk more at a different time, maybe about this.
The other thing I'll just add, because it came up in our negotiations with the association, is that this approach that we're taking on Act 153 is unique in that it's supported by administration, it's supported by our school boards, and it's supported by the association. And that's a pretty powerful impetus to take forward to our state leaders on this topic, to say, "This is what works in CCSU. It might not work in other parts of the state, but it works here for us." And I think, you know, through Dr. Dewise's guidance and leadership and counseling on this, I think we've come up with a nice innovative approach that solves, it solves a lot of issues that could have been created had we implemented this Act 153 in a different way. So, so thank you, Mike, for your work in championing this cause forward because I think it's not just win-win, it's a win-win-win for the association, the school boards, and administration.
And credit where credit's due, Aaron McGuire really deserves credit for the conceptual idea around this, and I just want to give her props for that.
Okay. We had on the agenda a labor relations executive session, but I don't think we need to...
We've managed that already?
We've already managed that particular topic, so any other questions, comments, concerns this evening? So...
Just an Act 129 question. Does the, you probably can't answer this, but maybe you can, Mike. Does the governor or Armando understand that some of the outcomes of 129 are counter to the school choice, expanding school choice?
I don't know where the governor is. I certainly think the secretary has some sensitivities to it.
Okay. It's like, it just doesn't feel like it's a way to really incentivize the reduction of costs in education from the state perspective, from the taxpayer's perspective. I mean, the larger schools are providing economies of scale that smaller schools just simply can't provide. And this seems to be counterintuitive to all of the opportunities for kids. Step down, question?
No, it's a legitimate question.
All right, thank you, Al. Any other questions? If not, then we'll adjourn this board meeting at 9:41.
Okay.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Okay.
All right, TN, thank you very much for being here. And have a good evening.
I thought you might appreciate that 153 item, I mean, I didn't want you to miss it.
Yeah. Glad you pointed it out.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
It's a problem, not any hard stuff in front of me. It's a bit bad.
Oh, folks, I do apologize, I do need some board signatures. Hoo, on the TAN, hoo.